Our student board members lead us in the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so before we get into the business of our meeting, we do have one special thing that we need to do. And Ms. Garrettson is going to help me with that.
Oh, come on.
It is Dr. McBride's 100th board meeting.
You got balloons, alright.
Maybe flip them around?
I threatened to bring balloons and you did. That's awesome.
So, thank you for putting up with us for 100 meetings.
What am I doing?
Oh geez, oh, okay.
I was just gonna separate these and...
So, for the audience members, this is my 100th board meeting. Which is funny that I'm bragging about this thing only because like Luann Johnson, who has been on this board now for 20 years, right, so if 100 is the average for six years, someone do the math how many she's probably been at, right? You know, somebody play with that. Mrs. Lopez Caniva's been in a few too, so. We will do the PR. Kathy Maxwell has been 100 too, you should be in here, but I know you can't.
No, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, we're photobopping.
Alright, you ready? Beautiful.
Oh, it's so fun, yeah, thanks you guys. Oh goodness. You know, I said earlier that Mrs. Lopez Caniva's like, oh, junior. Thank you, that was very nice, that's fun. And these guys have been doing it with me too, so, you know, and Kathy, so congratulations. And all the board members who've been there, really appreciate it. I was terrified my first board meeting, by the way.
Really?
I think Stephanie Croy totally knew I did not know what I was doing. You, board members, you learn by experience, believe me.
Alright, okay, so we are going to, we have a resolution to have our new student board members seated. I don't know if you want to give any background of how we got to this place, Dr. McBride?
Yeah, just very quickly, you know, kudos to you guys. The board is at a protocol, you're the third year into it. I really compliment this board, they just thought of things that even, you know, we didn't imagine as administrators. In the very first year, we had so many, the first year we had 53 applicants. And we had such strong applicants, the board had a very hard time deciding on just two sitting at the board. So it came up with a great idea, novel idea, of having two board members be on board committees. Because this whole board meets, and just for the public and people at home. But then there's another meeting, some board members are what's called the Facility and Finance Committee. Some board members are what's called the Curriculum Committee. So, this board came up with a great idea to say, let's have a student on those committees. So we ended up with four, and that was our first year. In the two successive years, we've had 26 applicants, so these students had 26 different people applied. We, you know, kind of winnowed that down to a dozen people, 12 students, who came before the board in June and interviewed with the Board of Education. Many of these folks, this is the second time that have applied. All of them served on my superintendent's advisory council last year, where they led things and got significant experience. And so they were selected by the board, they've already done their onboarding with me. James and Ryan will sit at this table once monthly in the formal meeting. Evelyn will work with the curriculum committee, and Abby here will work with the Facility and Finance Committee. So congratulations on about to be sworn in.
Okay, so you have to take the oath of office, and it is one of the longest oaths of office that you will ever do in your entire life. So, how do you prefer? Do you want to read it together or go line by line? Where I say it and then you repeat, or we just go through it all together? Together? Alright, so let's stand up?
Oh, I just, I like to read through.
So after the "I," say your name, it's all gonna sound like a jumbly thing, but it'll be alright. First and last name, okay? So, let's go. I
I, Abigail Carroll.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the member in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School District 205. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and employees to advance the vision for Lockport High School. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Congratulations.
Alright. And is, before you do that, you ought to tell us who you, who's here with you? Who's kind of your supporters, your fan club, your hype people?
I guess I'll go first. I brought my mom and my aunt.
Wait, alright.
I brought my mom, grandma, grandpa, and two siblings.
Right. He does not, you know.
Hello?
Hey.
And I'm alone.
Oh, Abby, Abby, you're never alone. Awesome.
Do we want to take a picture?
Yeah, a little picture.
So if you guys wouldn't mind getting together over there, we'll have someone take a picture.
And I'm, again, really sorry that everybody is soaked, so, just sorry about the rain coming. Oh, we like the esprit de corps already. Yeah, congratulations. You know, and just, you know, for all the families here, you know, you should be very proud. You're, you know, these guys very poised, you know, older than their years, you know, in many ways, gonna go off and do great things. Each of them have accomplished great things on superintendent advisory council, done real things that have impacted this board, right? So, you know, I just think when, when our young people go out and do things that we're proud of, we have to say, wow, we're really proud of you. You know, it's easy for us to be in the business of education, to be critics and say, you need to improve, we want to see you do better at that, we do a lot of that, you know, in education. But just when you see things that make you proud, you know, it's worth all of you being here, swearing them in, and saying, hey man, we're really, we're really proud, you know, of all four of you. And this, this meeting and your last meeting in June, we have all four of you at this board meeting just to get the experience, alright? So, your family and friends, they might leave and come back to pick you up later, right? But there's, don't feel like you guys have to stay, you know, for the full board meeting, but you do have to stay for the full board meeting.
So, we are all very excited to work with you this year. I've enjoyed having student board members on our board, just because you provide a perspective that we otherwise wouldn't have, so. Do I have a motion to accept Ryan Gleason, James Wyatt, Abigail Carroll, and Evelyn? Ooh, I should have practiced this. Side lar check? Shed lar check, okay, as the 25, 26 student board members.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Tammy Hayes. And second by Candace Garrettson. Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, up next, board salutes.
Well, I was gonna do Dr. McBride on this 100th board meeting. So, congratulations on surviving the 100th. And then to all the teachers and staff on their first day back to school, that's it.
Definitely want to recognize Mr. Conway and the groups that he worked with. We went and, you know, Wendy and her crew over at the city. We went to go watch the student videos, I think myself, Candace, Wendy was there, so was Ann. And they were just wonderful and great to see. One more person I want, I just personally want to thank Adam DeCare, who's a counselor here. My next door neighbor has a son who is transferring in as a sophomore this year, and he has done just a phenomenal job making him feel welcome, especially coming from a different school into an environment where he's, you know, coming in as a sophomore, he didn't get the freshman experience at Central. But I think that he's, I saw him and I was like, how'd it go? And he's like, I had a great first day, so.
That's awesome.
I would like to salute Bill Thompson and the movement, to Bill Almer and everything the grounds crew and everybody the buildings and ground has done just this summer to prepare the buildings for today. And from what I heard, it was a fantastic day from staff and students alike. And Saturday was a crazy storm, and you could not even tell when you drove by yesterday. So, they did a fantastic job.
Student board members, you can do board salutes too, by the way, you're, you are board members. So if you, something you saw that you liked, you enjoyed, you appreciate?
I would want to thank like all the coaches and the athletic trainers during the summer who led the camps, and then everyone involved with athletics going into the fall sports season. It's a lot of work and they always put their hard work into it.
I would, I was able to attend a number of, I guess, kickoff events for the school year. So, I just wanted to reiterate Dr. McBride's thank yous for the bus ride. And, you know, the Mrs. Green.
Yeah, Travanda Green, Jason Osborne.
And Jason Osborne, who facilitated that. That was, that was a fun experience and it was a good experience to get to see, travel the whole district. So I appreciated the opportunity. Also, the new teacher welcome, that was really, again, that was fun to see. And I was really impressed by Dr. Greenen and his staff for all that they did to onboard our new teachers and make them feel as a cohesive unit, hopefully when they walked in the door today. And then the teacher breakfast, Mrs. Caniva was there as well. I came for the auditorium portion, but it was just so nice to see all the teachers in the, you know, the lunchroom and the energy level that was there and, you know, the hum of the conversation and it was just a pleasure. And I know the hard work that it goes into putting those particular events go on. So, thanks for everybody for doing that, and thank you for letting me participate, it was great.
I would just like to wish everybody a good school year. Everyone from students to teachers, parents to admin, lots to do, so, have a good year, everyone.
Alright, student board member report, do we have a report this month? Alright, I like it.
We do have a report, so, the first thing we wanted to talk about was the institute day. We attended the institute day and lectured about the phone policies to all the teachers. And we wanted to talk a little bit about that. So, one of the first things we talked about was the teachers that already had phone policies. And we used a few examples to show like respectful boundaries with students and phones. What else did we talk about, James?
I talked about like making it important on the first few days to set a standard and make the expectation clear. You really want to like position students that like this is a good thing. And some of the teachers had concerns about like discipline and like working with the deans, but I think overall, it'll be a little bit hard in the beginning, but it'll work out like as we move along in the year.
One of the other things on that institute day that we did was we talked about how to frame it. Framing it as a, as a positive thing, like we're putting our phones away so that we can be more involved in classrooms. And I personally had a few teachers do that, and I think it was really effective.
And then also a big thing is making clear where phones are and aren't allowed. Like they are allowed in the cafeteria, however, classes, hallways, study hall, and the cafeteria are not allowed.
And then we also wanted to talk a little bit about the first day and like what we saw from the policy. You want to start with that, or should I?
You can start.
So, we saw a little resistance to study hall and compass. We saw a lot of people that wanted to utilize study hall and compass as personal times. Current board policy says that that's only allowed during the lunchroom. So we did hear a lot of people say, well, compass is a personal time to do like what we need to catch up on. That's kind of the purpose of compass, to get ready for the rest of the day. And we saw a lot of people that wanted to use their phone during that period, so maybe that's something we'll investigate further.
I agree with Ryan, and also students were kind of apprehensive about this new phone policy. I received messages personally from students like asking like, what is this and why is this happening? And like, they were like, they were like, oh my gosh, like what's gonna happen to our phones? And like I do assure them, like, you know, it's like, it's a good thing, you know, we're trying to promote learning. And then overall, the first day of school, you know, there was good vibes, we had a late start. So like, I think everyone was like happy to kind of be back in the building, but also get the extra hours of sleep. And then, I think everyone's ready for a good year.
AFT report.
And Evelyn, do you mind loaning Mrs. Kishline your, your microphone?
Hello, everyone, welcome back, excited to start another year off. We, a few, last week, we were able to meet with our new teachers to share with them the importance of the union. And I did make it a point that everyone in this room should be proud to be a porter. When you have surrounding schools who are putting out strike votes, working without a contract, we're in a good place, you know, I did inform our new staff that, you know, our administration is open, has, you know, we have tough conversations, but they work with us, they want to hear, you know, what's happening, and we have a voice, and that, you know, it's a good place to work. So I did make sure to share that. I have a few shout outs myself, to our Fresh Start Crew and football coaches, who brought all of the porters together to give our fourth place softball team one of the greatest state send offs that I've seen here in 22 years, it was very cool. To building and maintenance, to custodial, I literally could see my reflection in the hallways when I came back the first few days, this place is amazing and it does sparkle in ways that many schools don't. To all the office professionals and support staff that helped with Welcome Back Days, we wouldn't be able to do without that. You're very important in the process. So I am excited for a great year, looking forward to working with all of you, and it's a great day to be a porter, thank you.
Plus, Mrs. Garrettson and I, actually, we usually only see Mrs. Kishline in this room as AFT. We got to see her teach today, so that was a good thing. So it was fun being in your classroom, Mrs. Kishline.
Ms. Johnson, is there an IASB report?
Well, everybody know about the SuperLIFE coming. And then we'll have the Three Rivers Division Meeting coming up in October. So, it's gonna be at Parable, anybody interested, see Kathy. And then, that's it, that I have. Is there any else for Dr. McRae?
Not that I can think of right now, I think you got it.
Foundation board report.
Yeah, if you've got anything to share, Angela, tonight?
First bullet point's exciting.
So, I actually have I have an error, not by anything other than, I know the report I submitted said we have three new scholarships. It's actually as of Friday, it's five new scholarships in addition to the ones that we already offer. So we're well over $100,000 for scholarships for our students for the class of 2026. So, I feel like we're the best kept secret for some reason, even though I talk about it all the time. So the student board members should share that the only thing you need to qualify for a scholarship from the foundation at your high school is to be graduating from this high school. We don't put GPA on there, we don't, these are human, and these like just gotta be a human fills out the form and answers some questions. From everywhere, from scholarships for students pursuing math to students that are going into the trades. There's something for every student, whether it's $500, up to $10,000. We give away on scholarship night, a couple hundred thousand dollars, and there's usually like 85 to 100 kids on that stage, so math tells you that there is some significant support in our community for our students. It's super impressive that there's so many people that come around you to help you do what's next. So it's a great send off, so don't let it be just your little secret, share that with everybody. We're also excited that the Taste of Lockport is coming up in September. It's one month from Wednesday, on the 20th, we'll be downtown Lockport with Nick and Ivy helping us support that with, and Maggie Speaks will be headlining again this year. The School of Rock is going to come and do our opening, so that'll be fun. And Lupine Montessori is gonna run our kids area and kind of staff it and bring in things for families and kids to do. So I'm excited that it's the fourth year that we'll be able to bring that to Lockport. Those are kind of like the two main things.
Great.
Questions, comments, you guys should find me throughout the year to talk to me more about that. Alright, thank you.
And the foundation did the Maroon Apple Award, you know, as Mrs. Kishline always says, doesn't happen without our, you know, teacher, staff, all these people doing all these things, kind of neat. Last semester's Maroon Apple is awarded today, I mean, you know, beginning this semester, you know, Hannah Wallace was our winner, Bernander McEwen was our winner from Central. It's just a feel-good moment where you're, you know, that comes from foundation members, read nominations from peers. It's your peers who nominate you for the Maroon Apple, so pretty neat, pretty neat to see, pretty fun. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Legislative report.
I have no report, legislator is in recess.
Public comment follow up, there is none. As far as public comments tonight, there is none. Communications, there is none. Freedom of information requests, we do have two. And they're there for board consumption, anybody has any questions about those? Nope, okay. Alright, up next, we have, oh gosh, I have to skip a bunch of pages now, we went too quick. Alright, approval for board meeting open session minutes, July 21st, 2025.
I'll make that motion to approve those meeting minutes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Okay, do I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes from the July 21st, 2025 board meeting?
So moved.
Ms. Garrettson?
I can second that.
Second by Ms. Lopez Caniva. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from the board retreat on August 7th, 2025?
So moved. I'll second.
Ms. O'Halloran, second by Ms. Hayes. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Alright, do I have a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from the board retreat on August 7th, 2025?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Alright, we have no board expenses. Alright, treasurer's report.
And as Mrs. Croy comes up, one thought I have for the agenda, you'll notice that the tentative budget, we really, you know, stylized, we have a good discussion tonight. Although the, the actual document is in the treasurer's report, you've already voted on the tentative budget. Was thinking that we would actually have the discussion in the superintendent's report. Just given all of the, you know, the typical bills payable, statement of position, five-year forecast, all those things that are currently, you know, in the treasurer's report, if that's okay with the board. Anything of note?
Good evening, board. The, I think the primary thing I would note is in the financial reports, this is the first month of the new fiscal year. So all of your reports are gonna reflect just July activities, so it reflects one month of activity. And you'll, you'll see where we stand on the statement of position as far as the estimated months cash on hand. At the end of the first month, there is overall 10 months, so that's right within what the board goals are. And so you'll, you'll see only in the revenue and expenditure report, it's one month of, of activity comparing, right? So on the $86 million, you know, almost $87 million tentative expenditure budget, you'll see so far, in one month, we've got 10, 10 million, okay? The other thing that you would note is our investment report is fairly lengthy right now, and it'll keep, it'll keep growing, because as we receive the fall, the second installment of the 2024 taxes coming up here, we received the bulk of it in September. We'll finish investing that, those funds out to the rest of the cash flow needs. So you'll, you'll see we started filling in payroll dates, you see kind of, you know, a couple, a couple times a month, you see some investment maturities, well, that's where the bulk of the expenditures come out, right? With the board, the board checks that you'll be approving tonight as part of this treasurer's report, as well as the, twice a month, most months, two times a year, there's three, but you'll see the payrolls. The other thing you'll notice in the board tables, if you were to look at all of them, that there are, July is typically a very large month. The reason it's a very large month is we're paying for things like the school buses that the board bid last year, we're paying for our, our insurance to click, gets paid all upfront in that first month. So there, there are a number of things like that, in addition to, we have construction bills in there too. So that's the other thing you'll see in the treasurer's report every month, is I report where we at on the, the current project. So that, that's in there as well, and so there are some big expenditures to each of the, you know, the contractors that won those bids. So, those are kind of the things I'd like to point out. Are there questions on any of the other pieces? As far as the five-year financial project, forecast and the enrollment projection there, those are the ones that we continue to carry. After the board approves the budget in September, then those things get updated kind of pretty quickly after that. Enrollment projection will be updated in November, after fall housing counts are reported. And the five-year financial forecast will follow right after that. Any questions on any of the various pieces of the Treasurers' Report, including from the students?
Okay, okay. If there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve the July 2025 Treasurers' Report?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. O'Halloran?
I can second that.
Okay, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Stride?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Garretson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, up next, Board President's Report. So I just wanted to get some feedback on the board retreat. If everybody, so if the, the public is not aware, we had a board retreat. We all got together and just basically decided what our protocols were going to be for the rest of the time that we are together as a board. It was, in my opinion, I thought, a lovely experience being able to spend some time with you. Any feedback for me that, did everybody enjoy it as much as I did?
And as people gather their thoughts, in your folder are the norms and protocols. Lori Grant writes those up. She sent them to us. So new, fresh norms and protocols that, that you talked about in, in that retreat, just to point, point that out for you.
Did everybody feel like it was valuable to get all on the same page, hear from IASB?
Yes.
I think it was very productive. It was, it was very productive. And then especially to review our board protocols and, you know, revise a few things there. But I think it was really good. And then, and then, you know, being new board members here, also, you know, as far as giving expectations to our, to our superintendent, Dr. McBride. But I thought it was very productive, very good. And Lori Grant did an excellent job.
I would agree. As a new board member, it's, it was, it was good to get even more information as we move forward in this process. You know, some of us are new, so it, it's nice to have it fresh and refreshed for everyone. So it was good.
And not to say that there might have been anything like surprising or shocking because we're all pretty aware of what happens with boards. But was there anything that, that provided clarification? Do you feel like you walked out of it going, oh, that's why that happens?
No. I feel like as a new board member, I felt like coming in, any questions that I had coming in were answered pretty readily. So I felt like that I had a really good understanding just from conversations that we've had. But it was nice to meet Lori and Justin and Gary.
Yeah.
And just put a face with the name and know who we're speaking to when we need, need assistance in the future.
Great. As far as our partner schools, I spoke with Dr. McBride not too long ago. We're getting dates together. I'm going to survey our partner schools just to see when they might want to get together and invite the board president as well as another board member, if they would like to come in order to have those conversations. I do plan on attending the ribbon cutting ceremony at Homer on Wednesday. They have the new building that they built between Hadley and Homer Junior High. So I figured I would represent that. And then as far as the foundation's concerned, if anybody wants to go to the September 9th, is that date correct? 20th? I don't know where I got. The meeting, the 9th. We'll all be there for that too. And if you would like to work the Taste of Lockport, I know board members have volunteered in the past. Please reach out to Angela and she will put you at a spot.
Do you want to throw one other board matter in? Something I talked about with Mrs. Johnson and I talked with Dr. Shaw. And that is in regard to this very, very large binder that we are already starting to present.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
And so we, prior to me becoming superintendent, the board would meet twice in October. Once only to look at the student academic report and then once to have a regular business meeting. And then when I became superintendent, there was a conversation about folding this into a regular business meeting. But as you can imagine, if you fold it into a regular business meeting, there's the Treasurers' Report, there's other things that come up. And, you know, Mrs. Johnson gave me a call and we can, we can really only spend about 40 minutes on this. It's about 120 page document, very rich, very deep. So Mrs. Johnson asked me, and then I talked to Dr. Shaw and said, her suggestion was would we ever have a standalone workshop meeting to really go through this material? And I think, you know, my colleagues would feel, I could, you know, pass this around if you want a little show and tell what it is. Lots of people involved in this. We would say that we felt that we, we, we really haven't been able to go with the board as deep as we could to really understand some of the nuances of achievement, right? To do some of the deep comparisons of districts like ours, to look at our demographic projection and how does that express itself? To talk about the difference between a norm reference test and a criterion reference test, to really kind of pull things apart. So I, you know, I don't know if Dr. Shaw or Mrs. Johnson wants to talk about it a little bit. It's always a matter of time. You know, I thought of two things. We could do an independent workshop, a Saturday morning and evening. We could do how we approach the, the budget. We could do small, like two hour workshops to prep up, you know, with groups of people to really, really dig into it. For us, how we approach it is just a matter of timing because it takes quite a, you know, bit of time to put the report together. So just want to, I don't know, Mrs. Johnson, if you want to talk about it, was your idea, you approached me and then Dr. Shaw? I don't know if people want to chat a little bit about it.
The reason why I approached Dr. McBride is I felt that we all need to understand what that report's telling us. There's a lot, I think there's a lot of data to unpack. When you look at it, it's just data and numbers, you know? So we, we as a board to understand what the numbers is telling us. And I think during the, I want to say the retreat, couple of board members expressed not understanding why emphasis is on one part versus the other. So I think all of it's important and we should, we should, and if that's the case, that we're emphasizing too much on one thing, we need to remedy that. So that's my high level thought. Dr. Shaw?
Yep, I would agree. I apologize, my cell phone is in the porter pocket right now. I don't have my calendar accessible to me. Do we have a curriculum committee meeting in October or is it?
September 22nd.
September 22nd.
Is, I think I'm right about that, I think.
Is, is that a fair?
It could be a wrong date. Yeah, there's one in October as well. Yeah.
Yeah.
What are we looking at, Dr. McBride?
So I don't know if we can use that day to, to use the whole board and have that be the curriculum committee meeting? I don't, that's just an idea.
The October meeting?
Yeah, since we're going over it anyway there.
And what's the date, Dr. Christopher for October?
October 27th.
Right, we, we, we could take October 27th if, if, you know, we just wanted to do a second meeting, say that's just, that's gonna be a committee of the, what's called a committee of the whole meeting. Everybody comes to the committee meeting and we just do a deep, deep dive. Where that's a little bit helpful for us and a little bit deeper is that there is information like on the ACT that's embargoed until the 31st. So we do have to be a little bit careful that we don't, you know, share information that the state doesn't allow us to share yet. But the closer you are to that date, you're gonna get better data. I know that seems far away from the previous school year. We think so too, but that's, that's where we're at. There's not a preliminary data we can, you know, if that suited the board, that would, you know, if we just said, hey, we're just gonna do it on that evening.
I just threw it out there because I know Wendy, myself and Michaelina are already planning on going there.
That was actually my thought when I, when you had sent that out, but I've not done this before. So I wasn't sure if that's something you've done in the past.
Yeah, instead of having those two meetings, curriculum meeting and then another meeting, you know, board meeting, I think we can combine those two. I think it would be. And, and yeah, I agree with, with Ms. Johnson because sometimes in previous years, we always said like, you know, just the timeframes. It's always felt like I was, we were rushed and we didn't have enough time to ask those questions. Even though we got the information ahead of time, it was still, I mean, it was just time constraints.
Lot of information.
And it was a lot of information.
Do people who are new to the board want me to pass this around and just to, to kind of go through what it looks like? Just to give it, would that be helpful tonight? Just, and should we look at October 27th? Everybody feels good about that?
I think so. Luann, does that work for you?
Uh, yeah.
And would the, would that committee meeting then be extended? Is that, because what, it's normally like?
Yeah, we'd probably give you an estimate of how long it would really take us to, you know, I, I would say probably two hours at a minimum. I think a really good job would be like two and a half hours. You know, so generally I think the committee, Dr. Christopher starts at five or 5:30. Five, so we'd be looking seven, 7:30 to really, really dig into it. I think, for example, one of the things that'd be really helpful for the board is, is to look some of the dynamics of your demographics. So for example, we get really rich data from the state that compares us to other districts like us. So, you know, Jerome McKibben came and said to you in 2022, you're not gonna get more or less students, but you're different students. Where you see that really expressed is in 2019, sitting for the SAT, we had 11% of our students were designated as low income. In 2025, 29% of our students were designated in low income. It's very interesting, look at different schools that have had that same dynamic. Like you might not think Glenbard West and Glen Allen would have that same dynamic, but they do, right? Rolling Meadows High School has that, that same dynamic, right? And you can kind of compare yourself to peer high schools, what's going on with that kind of growth in a low income population, right? Glen Allen doesn't strike you like that, but indeed that is the situation, right? So we could, we could do some deeper things.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, Superintendent Report.
All right, kind of let's, you know, we'll get to, you know, some, just some very quick things. Opening of school, I really, just so many people to thank, freshman orientation, Dr. Green and her staff, welcome back days, Dr. Johnson and her staff, Dr. Yari here, Dr. Green and new teacher induction, outstanding. Really, you know, happy, I'm always glad when Mrs. Kishline partners with us. I believe it's important for people to get involved in their union, their professional association who represents them. We've all benefited from that. Two institute days, Dr. Christopher, all the presenters, myself, Dr. Green and all the breakout sessions that people attended, all the work that department chairs did. Really great building meetings by Dr. Johnson and Dr. Green, just really, really excellent, great day today. And Mrs. Kishline already outlined, you just have to think about all the hands that made that happen, custodial maintenance grounds, bus drivers. I thought it was fun that the bus drivers came to the breakfast in a bus. I like that. They all got off a bus. That was kind of fun. You know, just all the people that are, that are working overtime, office professionals, school counselors, really just to make the day the, the best kind of day for students. So it was really, it, it was excellent. You know, we're starting to see what's going on with the board's position. If you want to see our presentation, what we handed out during the presentation, I'll send this to the elected board members. Just for the audience at home, we have our cell phones in the porter pockets. We put them in here, if you can pass it out, Mrs. Maxwell. We put them in here because oftentimes we have meetings here. And probably when we come in here, we should just all deposit our cell phones and plug into the meeting and we can all get them when, when we walk out. So we'll see how that goes along. Know there might be some resistance to study hall and compass, but we're trying to say is when you're in a classroom space, you know, compass is really for academic work, not for cellphone work. Study hall is for studying. We're trying to signal to people, you know, these things could go away. Your most free time is at lunch, right? So that is, and you'll hear more from the principals. A great performance data, you know, I want to tease out just a little bit, this giant graph here, just, just what's coming your way in this big, huge binder. This is great performance data and what we did is we kind of pulled our 10 year data just to see kind of, you know, we've seen interesting things. And it also paginates, we did a presentation on this. This is all students. Paginates to different movements, collaborative learning. And one of the really interesting things is you see in about, you know, this is really big, but in, in, in about 2018, 2019, you kind of see 34.37, 36.42. You kind of see this upward growth in, in, in those years where that blue line is students earning As, the line below it Bs, Cs, Ds, Fs. One of the interesting things that if, if you kind of look at this is, you know, in terms of grades that our, our teachers have given out, grades that our students have, have earned, kind of had this pre-COVID jump up into about 40% As, but, but our students sustained that. If sustain the same level of Bs, sustain the same level of Cs, we have a very, very low failure, failure rate. What's interesting about that is often you didn't see that through the COVID pandemic. You saw steep dives for the years after COVID. So that's really a tribute to our students and our teachers because those are metrics that, that, that they're using. And then I also just did kind of the same thing, we use Forecast 5, just to give you an idea here of what students are doing in dual credit. A little bit different, you see, you know, As, Bs and Cs. You really don't see Ds or Fs in dual credit classes, which is also a tribute to our teachers and students. Just accomplishing As, Bs and Cs in college level classes. So just kind of teasing out a little bit, the kind of data that you're going to see, sort of the aggregate. We do believe grades matter. We think they're an important thing primarily because, you know, they're, they're earned by students, assigned by teachers. So it describes a relationship between teachers and students. This is the kind of thing we'll dive, dive deeper into. And then, you know, really wanted to open up to the, the budget and I talked to Dr. Shaw. And I do have paper copies of the board member questions. And when we were talking on the phone, just want to see in my report for board members. And I think Kathy, there's enough here for all, for the students as well, right? Is there enough copies for the students as well? Well, we'll see. So we'll, we'll send them to Mrs. Garretson and then we'll, we'll kind of send them around. You know, apologize if we don't have enough copies for the students, but let's just see, we want to make sure.
I think there will be.
Did officials have them? We thought it was good maybe to go through all these questions so the public knows what kind of questions you're, you're asking, if that's okay? If that's what the board would like to do? Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
You know, if that's a good way to approach the budget, you know, we kind of stylized tonight as really our last chance to, to dig deep into it. So I just want to take the questions, we won't, we won't, we're not gonna read this to you, right? The answers are really extensive so that you have a souvenir. But we had a couple of questions that are really interesting. Dr. Huntington can be in on this, of course, too, about tuition. And primarily, that was kind of the first, Mrs. Hayes asked that question almost a month ago. We pay various tuitions. For example, we pay tuition to Lincoln School, just county alternative school. But the majority of our tuitions go to students who have disabilities that we cannot serve here in our district. Even though we have many, many programs, we do have learners, social, emotional needs. We do have some students who attend Illinois School of the Deaf, Illinois School of the Blind, who have needs that we just can't address here. We are responsible. We have incarcerated students and even though they might not have really much of a relationship with, with us, their incarceration maybe even occurred in eighth grade. Since we're their homeschool, we actually pay for their, their tuition in an incarcerated situation. So the majority of that is, you know, for students in those kind of situations, that's determined through the IEP process, working with their parents with what are the needs. There was a specific question about just numbers wise, and I'll just read the question. I noticed the special education private revenue is 3.1 million and the payouts in the tentative budget are 2.8 million. Now this really asks a question, what's the difference between the revenue and the expenditure? And this is a really good question about the nature of, of grants that we work with. And I don't know if you want to maybe speak to that a little bit, Mrs. Correy?
Sure, thank you, Dr. McBride. So the majority of the grants that the district has are reimbursement based, right? So that means we're expending first. And then especially some of the ones like the special, some of the special education ones are state reimbursed as well. So they're not, there's federal funds and state. So there's some that are reimbursed by federal funds and some reimbursed by state. We have to, in all those cases, we expend first and then we provide the, the claim or the, the reimbursement request, whatever they require, and then they pay us. But the way that the process works is it's vouchered and says we owe, we're owed, and then the state releases funds after that. So depending on the timing of when the state releases funds, we report all our revenue on a cash basis. So if we look at a revenue, the revenue and the expenditures in any one year, the expenditures are for the current year, but the revenue, half of it could be from the prior year. And that's just the nature of us reporting on a cash basis. So we report revenue as we actually receive it and we report expenditures as we actually spend them. But we don't get reimbursed on a grant basis until often the following year. So that, that causes sometimes a significant difference, depending on what we're getting reimbursed for, what we're claiming, what the state has available. Because often there's prorations as well, so in some of those grants, depending on how many funds that the state budget allocates or the budget allocates. So there's proration that sometimes even reduces things. So all those things come into play and there could be significant. So, there's proration that sometimes even reduces things, so all those things come into play, and there could be significant differences from one year to the next because of that.
So, you know, for example, our taxpayers, we collect taxes, we know what the schedule is, we know what that kind of revenue is going to be, it's very consistent, we can put that revenue and expenditure in balance. The state, however, because of the voucher and the reimbursement, there's going to be a timeline between the expenditures and the revenue. That's generally the truth with federal grants, state grants, just that lag in time. Also, on something like tuition, we usually have a pretty steady idea of what tuition is going to be. For example, Mrs. Kishline's here, she really runs our Wilco program, a big chunk of tuition going to Wilco. She said, "We're going to need more buses this year," right? The board does not put a lid on something like Wilco to say, you know, we'll only have X amount of learners go to Wilco. We've kept it pretty open, people want to go to Wilco, they select those classes, we pay that tuition, right? Does that make sense about tuition? There's a much, I asked Dr. Huntington, she provided all the different kind of cases in the packet that you have, where we would outplace a student with disabilities. So, you could really get an idea of students have social-emotional needs, sometimes physical needs, what kind of learners are those that are beyond the programs we have? So, and I'll just kind of keep moving through the questions if, you know, unless I see somebody like Mrs. Garrettson.
Yeah, it's more just an observation or a comment. As a new board member, at about this time last year, going through the financial reports line by line, trying to figure out what's going on, I came, I was surprised to learn as to how much money that we pay for special ed and tuition, that type of thing. And so, I just found it very interesting, and especially for those who might not have a child who uses those services or those needs. I think it's, it's an eye-opening experience to understand just how well the district does work to try to service those students, and just the sheer dollar amount that goes into supporting those students. So, I'm not surprised to see the question, because it is a large dollar.
It's a large dollar amount, and sometimes in the public, people ask me questions about that, and wonder how discretionary it is, right? And as a matter of fact, we are publicly responsible for that tuition. You know, if we enter into the IEP process, we identified that learner can't be satisfied here, they're entitled to a free, appropriate public education, if that can only be satisfied, you know, someplace else, then we actually are required to fund that for that child. So, it's not a, and this is true in all school districts, right? You can probably see, we generally try to keep as many of our learners right here, with Lockport Academy, the CCC, the instructional program, modified program, co-teaching, right? I'm going to keep going, if, you know, just out of efficiency, there are a number, there are a couple of questions, I'll aggregate them, about student activities. When you see that, either a line item of $12,000 or an aggregate of about $668,000, the revenue there is almost exclusively from fundraising that our activities and our athletics do. It's all housed, you see in the treasurer's report, really all housed and under one roof, right? Fundraising occurs, we really, we really should see if the football team raises funds this fall, they should be expending those funds as quickly as possible. We do take a look to see if people are kind of like seemingly banking, because the idea is that the funds raised should be used on the athletes who raised said funds, or the activities people. There are times when some of our activities or some of our athletics really are thinking, there's an item we're specifically fundraising for, and it's going to take a couple fundraising cycles before we can buy that piece of equipment or that thing that we really want, and we keep tabs on that as well. So, that's the nature of sort of student activity accounts, generally run by sponsors, we publicly, not all districts, publicly make them available, we make them available, so there's financial responsibility there, so people can see just what you're seeing as board members. There's a question that Mrs. Hayes asked about something called E-Rate. Mr. Dusterhoff had a mighty challenge this summer to redo almost all of our access points, so almost all of our wireless access points at all of our facilities had to be redone, involve some rewiring. We also had some work that we did with our video cameras to enhance them to HD. We also had new laptops, it was time for new laptops for staff members. That expenditure, in order to get all of that equipment, bless you, here, ready on time, access points working, we have to purchase that upfront, and much of it is reimbursed by a federal program called E-Rate. Much like the grants, we have to expend the money first, and then we get the reimbursement. So, this was an imbalance between, there was a huge expenditure, why was that taking place without kind of the revenue to support it? Well, that revenue will eventually come in, but it's a grant program.
And that one happened across the fiscal year, which is part of the question, right? The expenditure landed in last year in order for us to get the equipment and have them do the work, and then we applied early already this year for the reimbursement.
There is, you know, all board members, and if anybody needs another paper copy, there was a question just about getting, kind of, this is an electronic form, the tentative budget, but we did provide everyone, and we can get everyone, some board members got it very late because of the US mail, but this 32-page document that has every single line item. One reason why we don't give a, you know, you might see these line items, state library grant, driver's ed, state free lunch, breakfast. Well, literally, in this database, if we even just did a full sentence or a paragraph description of these types of line items, you could just imagine how ungainly and how difficult it would be to read this, it would probably go from 32 pages to 232 pages. So, we try to do it for a scale of economy, clarity, descriptiveness through it. Kind of on page three, and I apologize, I didn't paginate this. Page three really is all of the information that Dr. Huntington, page three and four, provided for students that with disabilities that we outplace and where they're at, and there are some that are out of state, that has to happen, we go through ISBE. If we do place a student out of state, there's a whole process Dr. Huntington goes through to permit that, to allow that. There was another grant question, this is at the bottom of what would be page four. There are several areas in the budget where the revenue is less than was budgeted for that fiscal year. This is really title grants again, I don't know, Mrs. Croy, if you had any more to add, it's really that same dynamic that Mrs. Croy mentioned about, we have an estimated expenditure, we have estimated revenue, but we're oftentimes not getting the revenue at the real time that we're expending the funds, because of the nature of how grants work. I don't know if there's anything else that we.
Just the, like, there was like a second part of that question about the, you know, potentially under-budgeting one line item in the next year, and like, do we fix it for the next year? And then that's kind of like a two-fold question, because we do approach generally each year with, okay, what do we need this year, which may be different than last year, so that's one piece. But then the second piece is the way that the state board, so what you don't see here in the tentative budget, but you will see in the final budget, is the Illinois State Board of Education state form. And that state form actually takes a lot of our account numbers and like squishes them into one number. So, if you look at the length of our account numbers, only the first three sections of our six-digit account number actually matter to the state. So, they collapse all of the, you know, for example, let's say tech department, all of the tech departments, purchase service type accounts, repairs, purchase services, web-based software, they all start with a three, they're all condensed into one line for the state board report. So, when we look at the budget, we kind of look at it along the same lines, because it doesn't make sense to micromanage each piece if really what the board is going to get, our report, the district's report's going to be, we keep, the state cares for our ratings and whatnot, our auditor cares about that total number, that consolidated number, do you know what I mean? It's a little easier to manage that way, we do the kind of the same thing within the departments, you know, we try to have the departments, for example, tech department, as we keep talking about tech equipment, their whole budget, this is the total line, throughout the year, Matt's department might decide that, okay, we budget for equipment, but really, we need more supplies, and so they'll under-fund one and overspend another. And so, that could change from year to year, do you know what I mean?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Fluid.
Okay. And hopefully that answered the question.
It does.
Okay.
There was a great question, I'm just going to kind of keep moving through these on termination benefits, you know, why do we have termination benefits? $9,000 on term. When we have separation, there are some teacher retirement system, IMRF, state school code that require certain payouts for sick days that people have accumulated and they haven't used. Those of us that are eligible for vacation days, there's a requirement that those are paid out or used up. So, all of that addresses anyone that has any kind of payout related to benefit days that are unused, or any other kind of retirement payout that's required by our collective bargaining agreement, mainly.
This is another nature of that Illinois State Board of Education form. We are required to use the termination benefits object code of eight, or 8,000 in our case, because we make subaccounts. Anyway, we are required to use that specifically for sick day and vacation day payouts, and that's by the Illinois State Board of Education, like, manual for reporting. Otherwise, those types of payments would be buried in either salaries or benefits, but it's just one of those things that when they redid the account structure, this is what you'll use for that.
Just the coding.
There's another code on, object code actually, on that report also, that we don't even use, because we set, we set our capitalization policy, this is a total different, but I'm just talking about the expenditure, the nature of that report, and they require you, if, let's say, the district chose to make our capitalization policy, literally, the board policy we have that says our capitalization of equipment is $5,000. Well, if you do that, then you have to report everything between 500 and 5,000 in this other object code. So, it's little things like that, that we're required to report things certain ways, and then it causes questions, because nobody knows what it is.
Exactly.
Right? So, anyway.
Then there was a question from Mrs. Hayes, this is on, all the way on the back of your packet, which is really, really great question, with the board's sort of practice and policy of cash on hand, which is fund balances. You have a board policy that requires a minimum, sort of a floor, which is 150 days of cash on hand, or that basically is five months. For a number of years, the board wanted to have, at any given moment, 10 to 12 months of cash on hand. I think in philosophy, our understanding, at least this is a good check for understanding, is the board has been more comfortable with eight to nine months of cash on hand, and that's really the general needle that we've been using, right? It doesn't change your board goals, because your actual board goal says six to 12 months, so eight to nine is still operating within that, right? You could refashion your board goal, you know, there's policy versus a goal, right? The challenge is that at any given time, you know, you almost have to think of eight to nine months of cash on hand as an average. When we have tax revenue that comes in, in May, in September, you get an infusion of $15 million in bonds, that cash on hand is going to go up, right? It's going to bounce up, and then as we get, for example, into March and April, that cash on hand is going to slide down, right? More to, you know, six to seven months cash on hand, so it's going to be a variable depending on the season that we're in. What I would not recommend is that you somewhat arbitrarily lower your fund balances, you know, you'd have to lower it to something, right? To just bring it down to eight to nine, because you're going to have that fluctuation. Also, for example, in this moment that you're in right now, you have expenses on the horizon, right? Right now, you're using fund balances to prevent any additional tax burden on taxpayers. That you are assigning, transferring fund balances in a way that, at least for us, short of an assessor raising the assessment amount of someone's home, there's no new tax burden on taxpayers. So, if you do that again, you've got to pay that bill with fund balances coming up. We're going to be proposing to you in September, two important things, one, a period day bell schedule, that will have a cost, you'll have to decide how you're going to upfront spend, pay that, right? New cost annually. You'll be getting from DLA a sense of what your east campus facility master planning document is, what kind of expenses are here, those expenses in many areas are, you know, quite significant, because you have bleachers that we believe need to be replaced, and pro turf that needs to be replaced, these are very large sums, right? You'll have to make a financial maneuver to say, "We're going to use fund balances, are we going to use debt to do that?" We have continued work that's kind of asterix right now at Central, a year ago, the board said, "We want to do $10 to $12 million in fund balances for some very discreet CCC, Lockport Academy, science classrooms, secure vestibule," right? So, all of that is a pretty significant call on your fund balances, if that's strategically how you decide to fund part, some, all of those upcoming Horizon events. That's one reason why I wouldn't just, you know, look at a budget right now at fiscal year 2026, say, "Let's find a way right now to drop it down to eight to nine months, expend it on something," but you have real significant Horizon expenditures, and you've kind of made it a goal to, at least, you know, and this is something to talk about as we get into the levy season, you've made it a goal not to have new taxpayer burdens, at least, you know, outside of assessors, and we're not assessors. So, if you want to keep on that direction, you're going to need fund balances to do that, right, in the future. Any questions about that goal? That's kind of how we've interpreted the goal, but it's a good check for understanding, we try to aim at eight to nine, so kind of keep it, you saw in what Stephanie presented, the treasurer's punch report, we were at 10, right, pretty close to eight to nine, but we're going to get some tax revenue pretty soon, and we're still on the May tax revenue as well, so. And then there was a really good question about fees, you know, what is the fee that we charge, you know, we charge students, it's $315, that hasn't changed in over a decade, and what's really neat about that is that's an all-inclusive fee. So, in many districts, like my own home district, when my children were going through school, we had to pay a Chromebook fee, we had to pay a technology licensing software fee. My children participated in athletics, $120 athletic fee, my children participated in orchestra, orchestra fee. We had to buy all of their books, supplies, online subscriptions separately, and then we had a registration fee, and that all kind of was a lot more than $315, let me assure you. We don't go à la carte like that, except for like driver's ed, you know, we do charge a fee for driver's ed, for example, that's all included. You want to play athletics like James, you want to be in an activity, you want to have a Chromebook, you know, all of your supplies and equipment, that's, you're in construction trades, that wood is provided for you, so $315. Hopefully, we did an efficient job with the questions.
Any points of clarification?
Yeah, anything we need to dig into, or is it a good time to really pause and sort of, excellent questions, I mean, really outstanding. We really appreciate when you're really digging deep, it's so helpful for us, and you know, people are thinking about things and wondering about things, asking about things.
No, I appreciate the review of the fund balance and having that talked through again, only because it just, for me personally, reassures that I think we're operating the right way, because it gives, it gives the district flexibility, but still to achieve, you know, the goals and still hopefully give them, the district, the opportunity to use fund balances when they're available, but also to recognize that we've got things that are coming along the lines, that we can make those decisions as they come along, and still abide by our goals and our thoughts and our policies.
And I think going off of what you just said, Candace, if any board member wants a visual of kind of what that looks like when we receive tax revenue, and then we spend down, and then it shoots back up, Stephanie would be able to provide just a year-long image of what that would look like. image of what that would look like.
It's in the treasurer's report every month. So if you look back to last month's treasurer's report, cash flow kind of shows you.
It's not as, you know, right now, it's
Oh, it's not.
We're the beginning of the race, so to speak. But if you go to last month, then you do get, if I jump to end of the year, you do get the whole spread, right? How that works. Another really significant thing I always mention is the investment report. And Stephanie pointed out when those investments mature to pay payroll. So about half of your fund balances, at any given time, a third to half of your fund balances are not liquid. We take that tax revenue, we invest it so that we can be paying off mainly in payroll, which is 85% of your budget, but we're making some interest income on that rather than just leaving it, you know, we're kind of, I always say, putting the people's money to work, right? Which is a responsible thing to do. So about half of your fund balances are in liquid form. But at any given time, the rest is invested. Usually CDs, treasury bonds.
So next month, you'll have the same summary, the same detail with the updated, any final adjustments to the budget in it. You'll also have the legal form, and that is the one but one document that every board member signs with their vote. And then you'll also have a comparison between the numbers that you're seeing right here and anything that did change. So I will identify for the board members, like, here's what our tentative was, here are the new pieces of information we have, and here's why we're changing it. One of the examples I gave in the finance committee was the evidence-based funding, right? We didn't find out whether we were gonna get any tier of funding until just a few weeks back, so I didn't know that in July. So that additional 94,000 or something will be in the revenue line item for evidence-based funding. So things like that, right? Buying dehumidifiers, didn't know we were gonna need to buy a few of those. So things like that will kind of fine tune in the budget. And you'll see those differences. My plan would be to show you. Here was what you approved tentatively, here are the differences, here's why, and here's the final, so.
Stephanie, remind me, I think we talked about this in the finance committee, the we'll see, what's not in the current or prior reiterations of the budget is the first payroll, right? So by September, we'll have, you'll have the
So last Friday was the first payroll.
Right.
So yes, that is one of the comparisons I will be doing probably this week, looking at that payroll and figuring out, okay, we estimated what our total salaries and benefits were gonna be, let's see how close we were based on this payroll. Now, there still could be things that change between now and the end of the year, but at least this will give us a better, you know, better understanding of whether any of those line items needed to be adjusted. For example, in the final hiring that the personnel office was doing, were the estimates off on what that new teacher was gonna cost us in whatever department, right? The other big, actually, one of the big questions is when you do hire new staff, what benefits are they gonna elect?
Right.
Right? So if they, you know, I projected them to elect family benefits, all of them, but half of them elect single, then I can reduce that budget line. So things like that, I'll be kind of testing to see whether they need adjustment, and all of those adjustments would be in the final.
Okay, thanks.
We have a month, so if you have, if some things come to you, it doesn't mean that like, this is it, sorry, you know, obviously. So please ask questions. You know, when we get to September, that is a real deadline because we have a statutory obligation to submit our budget in September, you know? So the only way that we could continue talking about is to do after September, I think we have a meeting on September 15th, is to do another meeting, you know, because we do have to have it approved, and it is the one thing that all board members have to sign, so. All right? That concludes my superintendent's report. Hundred board meetings. Thank you very much. Thanks for the fanfare. I'm just, I'm always grateful. Thank you.
Curriculum report.
If you need a mic, you know, I'm sure Ryan would provide you one and, you know. Dr. Christopher, you probably need to pull that one a little closer. Thank you.
I got one here. Yeah, no problem. Thanks for joining me. I just wanted to make sure that I made the board aware that we're working on a little bit of a, I like to refer to it as like a recalibration. Some might say it's a refurbishment, but we're looking at our formerly known as Guidance Department to transition to Student Services. We really feel that the name and the change needs to happen in order to support the work that we're doing there. I recently attended the ASCA National Conference with two of our counselors, and I feel that that is the direction that our district needs to go into. We need to make sure that we have a comprehensive counseling program in order to support all students and all learners here at Lockport Township High School. And so I just gave you kind of a brief overview of what we're looking to do and how we're looking to make this strategic realignment with our Student Services in order to have a research-based, solid framework of school counseling programs to really attack our proactive approach to school counseling moving forward. So as we go throughout this year, hopefully you'll see some new signage, some new taglines, some additional information to bring in all of those support services for students.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is this strictly going to be with the Guidance Department, or will the Dean's Office be a part of this as well?
Right now, we're, Student Services, our park, the nurses, and the school counselors, social workers, school psychologists.
Oh, I know, they have their teams.
Dr. Hunter did, you know, very efficient, but it is a big project. You know, just to think about how that's aligned, Central to East, to think about how it's aligned within the department, think about the efficiency of meetings and how meetings are adjudicated, how do students become aware of Student Services? How do students use Student Services? How do Student Services personnel deliver those services? So it's a fairly big rethink of making this department accessible to families and students, so.
I'm sorry, you said the Guidance Office, the nurses, and what else?
Nurses, park, our social workers, psychologists.
All right. Thanks.
I have a quick question. And I like that you're changing that and just encompassing all students, and I think it's gonna be a great change. And I wish you well, and you're in doubt around it.
Thank you.
With Wilco, is there an area that encourages students or gives them the ability to take classes geared towards social work or anything of that nature?
So we have some dual credit opportunities with Lewis University that some students are taking. So we have an Intro to School Social Work. We also have some psychology coursework as well. Wilco doesn't have like a teacher prep program that we utilize because we have programs here, so like our Porter preschool.
Right, yeah, I know the teachers.
Teaching internship, yeah. So we look at ways that we could get access to that type of programming for students, and then gives them a leg up with a college credit for an Intro to School Social Work, right? Am I right?
No. Great job.
Thank you.
I would say our students who have taken the Intro to Social Work class, they had a fantastic experience. They did some work with senior citizens and that aspect of social work. I think the students who get involved with psychology, a lot of the times, they really, what they really want to do is social work, right? So it's really about how do we help them understand a licensed therapist or a psychiatrist and being a social worker. So we're really proud of Lewis for having this opportunity, and they actually have a great social work. Whether students choose to go there or not, as long as they know that that's what they want to do.
Right? Thank you.
And I did pop into Welcome Back Days, and I did see Lewis University was advertising there, so I appreciate them doing that.
Numbers at that moment, because I was in there too, they said, we have doubled the number of students. And we're not done with enrolling, trying to get more students in that programming.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, you know, two very eager principals to tell you all about today.
All right. I just wanted to start off by saying, we did have two great days with our entire teaching staff at the Teacher Institutes. So that was a great way to kick off the school year. And then I really want to thank Brian Armour and our custodial maintenance staff, walking through Central on Friday morning and then walking through Central this morning. They did an absolutely phenomenal job of making sure that, you know, the classrooms, the halls, everything was ready to go. And thank you to our Central staff. The first time they got access to the building was Friday at 11:30, and so many of them actually came in on Saturday. And thank you to you, the board, and to Dr. McBride for allowing the staff to be able to come in to make sure that their classrooms are ready when the class of 2029 walked through our doors this morning. We did have a minor bus accident, but the kids still, we greeted them at the doors, and they came in with a smile, eager and ready to go. We did kick off our first day at Central with an all-school assembly, and that is welcoming them into the Porter family, talking about what a Porter is. They now know it's a winner. And then also talking about logistics, because this class, just like the class before, they did not have access to the building prior to today. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, we gave them some resources, talked a little bit about logistics before they kind of went about their day. I did cut the assembly a little short. It was a little hot in our auditorium today, but it was a great day. You know, our freshmen are resilient. We did all dress in maroon at both campuses, and we told the freshmen, anybody in maroon can answer a question and help you find a classroom. So it was a great day. And at the end of the day, everyone got on their buses and lots of smiles. So just thanking everyone, our staff, the custodians, the maintenance crew, they absolutely were phenomenal in making Central look spectacular today.
I wanted to echo, I want to shout out to Brian Armour and to our maintenance staff. This building is huge, and they did a wonderful job getting it clean. I know that, I think Katie talked about being able to see her, you know, like her shadow, not shadow.
Reflection.
Her reflection. It's getting late in the night.
It's okay, it's been a long day.
It's been a long day. She saw her reflection. I also want to say, you know, thank you to Dr. Green for suggesting that we have our staff members wear maroon so that they could be a, you know, like, a support to students who, you know, we have a lot of sophomores, it's their first time at East Campus. Also, we have a lot of transfer students, and so to have our staff member in maroon LTHS shirts just saying, hey, if you need anything, let me know, ask questions, that was nice. We did kick off our Welcome Back Day playing the song Welcome Back. Who is the artist? I wrote it down. You know, the, like, Welcome Back Carter? Yes. So we played that this morning right before we did our announcements.
Nobody at this table ever remembers that show. We weren't even alive with that show.
Yeah, so we played that song for the kids on the PA this morning as they were, you know, coming in right before, you know, school started. The staff, they were so excited this morning. We also had the Porter wagon, which is our way to give treats and just to connect with our staff. You know, whenever possible, they loved the treats. They came down a few times. People were really hungry today. I think like our teachers are like, their bodies are on different schedules now that we're back in school. And so we said, yes, if you need an extra treat, come get one, because we wanted to make sure that everyone just felt ready and comfortable. The students were excited too. I got to go into some classrooms where they did some getting-to-know-you partnership, you know, tasks in the class. And one of the things that the kids were doing, I went to a class where they built these octagons, where they, it was like all about them, and they put their octagons together to build this big shape, just to, you know, build some unity and that classroom community bonding, which I think is really important. One of the things that I did notice is that I did not see, and I know this is crazy, students on their cell phones. I know it's wild, it's like day one, and I talked to kids, you know, throughout the day, like, how was it going? And, you know, they said that it was fine. I talked to some of my students at the end of the day, like, okay, tell me for real, because they are seniors. And they said they felt so proud because in all their classes, they talked about cell phones, they started using the cellphone pockets. And one of the things that I love most about the conversation was, students said that they could really focus, and that they really could kind of be involved in their learning today, which I think that's just our hope and our goal for all of our kids. We do have our Senior Sunrise this Friday, which is at 6:00 a.m., and you would be surprised that there will be hundreds of kids on our football field having some fun with some games and some breakfast treats, and they take a lot of pictures. And so I'm just really thankful to the board just for being so supportive of us and coming to the school to, you know, be a part of our Welcome Back Days and to be a part of our Institute Day opening sessions. You know, it really means a lot to us that, you know, we feel the support from you, so it's been a really great day.
Yes, it has.
Yeah.
Until everyone got soaked coming in this afternoon.
Oops.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, board members can see, there's one overnight field trip, just for everyone's information. Facilities report.
You've got it right there. Mr. Armour is out and about in the district, as you can see. Storms again. That usually means stuff. So Mr. Armour is out checking said stuff out. So, you know, we'll probably find out after this meeting, but you can see all the different things that have been going on from cellphone holders, lots of pictures. You know, that's the area that's of work that's being done that we didn't anticipate, but you can see those masons are rebuilding that entire parapet wall. Little temporary fix to a ceiling here in the veterans foyer, just, you know, a lot going on, resurfacing, just a lot of things that people are doing, pairing lentils, pockets, Porter pockets. Any questions about the maintenance report? Lot happening, lot happening. Awesome.
No, I just want to say thanks. Just, I think Brian is hit the ground running in my interactions. He seems to be doing a really good job, feeling pretty good about how things are going. He's had some challenges just lately, but, you know, that's par for the course, I would think. I think he's a good hire. I'm looking forward to working with him more.
All right, consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items two through seven as listed?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Lopez Caneva. Second. Second by Candace Garrettson. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Action considerations. Approval of the property tax assessment matters. All right, do I have a motion to approve the property tax assessment matter?
So moved.
And so Halloran?
I'll second it.
Second by Tammy Hayes. Any questions? Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, policy updates. Press 118, Group Two.
Press 118. Thank you to my colleagues, Kathy, Mrs. Maxwell for putting this together. This is Group Two. We looked at Group One, which dealt with Title IX. There was a board member question about Title IX, which is a policy 5100 that we approved, but it does designate who does the professional development on Title IX. Really, that is Dr. Green's office. We are all in the midst, I think probably Michaeline and Veronica and Wendy, we're all doing our GCN. And that really comes out of Dr. Green's office, who makes sure that we all do our mandated and required training. Much of that is Title IX. Just had a whopper-sized Title IX update out of Dr. Green's office as well, kind of updating people who, you know, touch Title IX the most. I roll through these policies, so, you know, as always, please stop me. We did the first reading, there were the Title IX revisions in this policy group, and now these additional policies deal with other school matters. One is identity protection, four colon 15. It's been updated to safeguard information when we do grants, any transmission of student information in grants, federal, state, any kind of grant, that we protect students' personally identifiable information, just like we do with anything that we do, is written in there. Counting and audits. This was updated to address the Counting and audits, this was updated to address the, to increase the capitalization threshold. This is grant awards that increase the capitalization from five thousand to ten thousand as a capital asset under, under grants. Getting a great soundtrack back here with the, you know, I feel like I'm on the Munsters or something. Food services, this was changed, this really was unchanged, but the footnotes are that the Illinois State Board is working to secure, secure more contracts for halal and kosher foods, just a footnote change. Expenses, this, it wasn't updated, this policy, five colon sixty, just new legal references, five-year review. Six colon one fifty, you're gonna see this a lot in this group. There's recent legislation that gives great protections to bless you. Students that, that, you know, are missing school, unable to attend school due to pregnancy, parenting obligations, health concerns arising from domestic or sexual violence. So this is requiring us to provide homebound tutoring to those students, as we would of any, any student who is, you know, has a health reason that they can't come to school. Six colon two-three-five, this was updated to specifically have the optional use of AI in our access to electronic networks, it requires a district-wide AI usage plan. Mr. Dusterhoff is in the middle of doing that with the ERG group, even as we speak, to fulfill that, that policy change. Seven colon fifty, no change to admissions or student transfers. There was a elementary school K through twelve district change, not high school district. Residency, this was updated, again, this is any kind of transfer between buildings for reasons of a parent who's expectant, expectant parents, victims of domestic or sexual abuse. Mainly a policy change that impacts multiple high school districts. We're adopting it because we have two buildings. Tenants and truancies, this policy was updated to add more valid causes for student absences. You know, we, we've got bereavement, we've got illness, medical appointment, religious holiday. This gets, updates the five mental health days, for example. So the state has included more reasons why a student can be excused. Interesting point, in fact, it's the school that excuses students, not the parent. Schools are really supposed to judge whether the reason is valid, but in colloquial ways, you know, most people call in their student excused, right? But technically, it's supposed to be the, the school that says whether it's valid or not. Student behavior, this was permitting the school and employees to have, use reasonable force with the student, i.e., there's a fight, there's an altercation, it puts into policy that we actually have a affirmative responsibility to use reasonable force, restraining someone in a situation like that. It still, you know, no corporal punishment, it's completely banned. It also adds the definition of sexting, specifically as a prohibited conduct. Also does some things with drugs, firearms. Suspension procedures, seven colon two hundred. This requires us, we always do this, we consider mitigating circumstances in a suspension or in an expulsion, and it allows a student to have representation, whether that representative is a parent, whether it's themselves, could even be an expulsion, could be an advocate, could be an attorney. Expulsion procedures, updated, the same. Student support services, this was policy required. If you're twelve years age or older, that we can provide the ability of counseling, school counseling, school social work without parent notification, but I would tell you that we always partner with parents. There's very few situations where we, where we wouldn't, but this is state school code. This is also kind of ensuring that we have policies, procedures, protections for students who are parents, expected parents, or victims of sexual abuse or domestic abuse. This is administering medicines to students, so updated to clarify that some students can self-carry, like in diabetes, have a seizure plan. These are some restrictions on high school publications, prohibits publications that encourage violating board policy, it changes school to district. So that's not protected under student free speech to encourage, you know, breaking board policy. And then finally, visitors too, in conduct, the policy was updated, rename the criminal offense of patronizing a prostitute to a person engaged in the sex trade. Why is that important? Because we run people, visitors, through the state's database, and what the offense might be, that we say you can't come on to our property, the name of that offense matters, so. Questions, thoughts, reactions? You know, next month would be the approval. So fairly well-aligned with state school code, not a ton of choice here. Some, you know, have some particular things related to us being a high school district. That is policy, Dr. Shaw.
Okay. Alright, so what we have up next is our second closed session, so I think that we're, everybody can head out besides board members if they.
Yeah, right, yep.
Come back and reconvene and close out the meeting once we're done, so there is no action being taken after closed session.
Right. There's just announcements.
Yeah, so we'll take a five-minute break. If anybody needs to run and use the restroom or anything like that, and then we'll let everybody head out.
Alright, great, thanks.